I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting into order. And we're gonna start out with the invocation, and then we'll follow that with the pledge with Commissioner Patton, if you would. Invocation with Commissioner Patton, well, after the pledge.
After the pledge, okay.
She's got invocation first. You messed me up.
I'm sorry.
My prayers are raised. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we approach our throne this evening, asking your blessings upon us that we enter into this meeting. Please bless us with compassion and understanding and the wisdom to make the right decision for our citizens. Bless our country, bless the leaders that we have. And in an upcoming election, may people be able to vote and to have a peaceful transition to the authority that will take place. So with us now, Father, protect us from the evil one, in Christ's name. Amen.
This show started. First item is approval of the regular minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Next is approval of the special call minutes, minutes at the special call meeting.
Make a motion that we approve those minutes also.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, motion passes. Next item is the bills and payments.
Make a motion, repay the bill.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, motion passes. Okay, no old business I'm showing in here. So, going to new business, first item is the first reading of annexation of a portion of Bluegrass Crossings Industrial Park. This is the property, portion of property, uh, it attaches, it connects near Hucks, so it is contiguous to the city. It would go out towards the distillery. We have the legal description of the property be annexed in 35.281 acres. We have the letter of request from the Green River Regional Industrial Development Authority asking to be annexed, for this portion of their property to be annexed. And we have a letter from West Kentucky Distilling Company. The master distiller, Jacob Call, asking for their property, portion of property within this to be annexed. And we have a plat of what they're looking at annexing.
And you said it connects him with Hucks.
Yeah, right here's, the dotted line right here is the, the property, is the city limit line now, out beyond the on-ramp. It'll hook right there, come across, come across part of the distillery property and around and back in here. And right here's where they're looking at building that conference center. And this is future development for the industrial park, so that would be
Yeah.
Uh, property. And then this road, this is the new road they're fixing to build out to do a cul-de-sac out to the corner, because they're having a lot of interest in property, but that people want the property that can be seen from the two interstates.
Oh.
And right now, you can't hardly get to it. So, they've gotten some money through the county IDA, through the TBA money to do the road, so that road extension's coming up, so that could help too.
So we just need to, a motion?
We just need a motion, a second, for this first reading.
Of the annexation of Bluegrass Crossings, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, and that motion passes. Next item is another ordinance, first reading. We did the resolution back in, I think it was July, for the medical cannabis. And this is the first reading of ordinance that would allow, where we have given us the authority where it allow medical cannabis sale, or not sales, but dispensaries and licensees within the city limits. Some cities are doing it, some are not. Some are putting it on referendum, it's too late to go on a referendum. And like I said, we've already passed the resolution to go with it, so I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this first reading.
For the first reading of medical cannabis.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. The next item, which kind of goes along with that, would be, uh, adoption of an ordinance for the city of Beverden amending our business license ordinance by adding medical cannabis related businesses. That'd be medical cannabis under section 49. One, a medical cannabis dispensary would be an annual license fee of $500. And then the medical cannabis cultivator, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility. And that would be four different businesses, should they decide to locate here, it would be $500 each. And I would need that in a form of a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the first reading of the planning and zoning ordinance.
No, this is not the planning and zoning, this is the business license.
Oh.
Uh, it's part of the cannabis, medical cannabis, I'm sorry, it's kind of like, it's to be.
I don't see that on here. To be, okay, I make a motion that we approve the first reading though?
Yes.
The first reading of to be.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, that motion passes. Now, the first reading of the planning and zoning ordinance amendment, which does a couple of things. Uh, one, under section 673 Highway Business District, which is a B3, it would add, under permitted uses, medical facility with no pharmacy, or no pharmaceuticals present on site. Under item two, conditionally permitted uses, it would add medical facilities where pharmaceuticals are stored, dispensed on site, and medical cannabis dispensaries. The dispensaries of which cannot be located within a thousand foot of the perimeter of a, perimeter of the property of a school, daycare, or park property. And then under sections 681 Light Industrial, I1, under conditionally permitted uses, would be the medical cannabis cultivator, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility, all of which cannot be located within a thousand feet of the perimeter of the school, daycare, or park property. And yeah, that's what we're adding to that one. So those are the one, two, three additions to our current.
On planning and zoning.
On planning and zoning.
Do you need those individually or together?
No, we can do it at one time, because it's all under one ordinance.
Okay, I move to approve the planning and zoning ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor with I. Post same, motion passes. Next item is a planning and zoning board appointment. I found out, been talking with Morgan at KLC, and I talked with her, met with her a week before last, and I talked with her again last week. Some commissions and boards that the city has, you have to be a city resident in order to serve on. I asked about planning and zoning, and she has gone back and looked, and nowhere can she find where planning and zoning in the state statute requires residency of a, within the city limits. Since we have a joint with Hartford, she says that there's no reason that couldn't extend out to the county. I'm having very difficult time finding someone in the city to serve on that, but I have found someone who's interested in serving on that, and that's Terry Baggarly. He does not live in the city, but he owns business, he has a business in the city, and he owns quite a bit of property in the city. And he does a lot of building, and he's involved with planning and zoning a lot, and he's agreed to do it on the.
And I make a motion that we approve Baggarly to the planning and zoning board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, motion passes. Next item is the bids for asphalt. We only had one bid, which is down a standard from Scotty's. And the bid for asphalt in place includes traffic control as well as KYTC-approved emulsified tack. Asphalt placement, $104.50 per ton. Street prep is not included, any required prep, including edging, bike, sweeping, et cetera, shall be as follows. Street prep, including traffic control measures, flagging is 295 per hour. Milling is not included, any required milling shall be at additional costs as follows. Edge keys, $15 per linear foot, and street milling, $1,500 per hour with a five-hour minimum. This price does not apply to small quantity patching. Asphalt prices are based on the month of October 2024 Kentucky Asphalt Index of $592.14 a ton. Materials are in accordance with the Department of Transportation, so the bid for this actually is $104.50. Can you remember what it was last year?
When it says it doesn't apply to patching, so if they're on a street and part of it just needs some patching.
Well, a lot of depends, they.
If you have them come and set up and move a lot, they're not gonna do it from the same place.
Right, right.
They're pretty good about working with us on patching now.
That's what I thought before.
Generally, patching, what we do of patching is a little bit longer than not going out there and just doing a pothole.
Yeah.
But that is the only bid we had, so I entertain a motion to accept that.
Make a motion to approve this second bid for asphalt.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, motion passes. The liability grant. I knew there was a couple of things, and I didn't know what y'all decided on.
We'd kind of left that open for y'all. There was the possibility of the cameras, of whatever.
I think we did see that before.
Yeah, we've seen this, the cameras.
For the police officers. Wasn't there one on there for?
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
Body cameras, storage, and monthly fees are not included, but the cameras are. This is due in November, I think. Yeah, November 8th. Cameras?
We need to check on, see how much it's gonna be for storage and all of those stuff, it's gotta go along with them.
It's something we're gonna have to get into eventually, whether we like it or not. Do you remember how much this is up to?
I don't know if they ever said that, Jill.
I think they did on there, but I don't remember.
Hartford just did this.
How much is the grant for?
Yeah, they had a separate grant. Up to $3,000.
Would that be something, just buy the cameras and then have to worry about the other part later?
Well, we've got enough time
Okay.
To do this. Can we check into that storage and all that kind of stuff and see what we, what it would be? Because we can have it in a special call meeting to apply for the grant, if we need to change it to something else.
You want us to go ahead and make a motion to apply for the liability grant for cameras? And then, like you said, if we needed to change it?
We can do that.
Have a special call meeting.
Was there anything else on there that got your attention more?
All of our vehicles, for the most part, with the exception of a couple, have backup cameras, so we don't need that.
Of course, you know what I'm looking at over here.
Well, but there's, it's.
I can't see it fine.
The surfacing material, but that's not even gonna hold a candle to it, because our next thing we need to think about is the, the soft solids are surfacing.
Yeah.
And then the other is, playground equipment, it's only for that to replace old equipment. Sidewalk replacement or repair, we've already done that, I don't know.
Which, which is more than a kid's day. But, yeah, we really got with it in the past. We really got on it in the past month or two or so.
And you said eventually, we're gonna.
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
Can we just make a motion to apply for the grant and not specify what for yet?
No, she was gonna go ahead and apply for the cam, for the cameras, but we could always change it if something comes back and it's not gonna work.
I could use the storage and all of that.
Okay. Sorry, you making that form of a motion?
I did, yeah.
We get a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I. Post, post same, motion passes. Next item is the Hucks lift station contract.
I don't have it.
Oh, he didn't?
Did you hear it back from me?
Okay, I don't know, maybe he sent it over here, because he wasn't here.
I mean, I could tell you the gist of the contract, but, and y'all could, if that works, I don't know if you need to see it or not. What we're changing on the contract is Hucks will be responsible for every service not provided by the city. Where before, if we called the electrician, we paid that bill. If we had to bind a pump, we paid that bill. Now, Hucks will just, their fee that they pay to the city will just be for work provided by the city. And it's for $12,000 they owe us for last year, and they'll pay us for this year if they approve the contract. If Hucks doesn't approve the contract, we can go from there.
They don't, we still bill them for sewer on top of that, right?
Yes.
Sewer service. If they don't go for it, it's just a matter of, we don't go back out there.
Yep. I make a pass by those. If it's direct, I wanna go.
Well, I mean, I'd like to go ahead and do it just to be a good neighbor, or to try to help. We can, but we can't do it at everybody else's expense.
Need a motion to you.
Probably need to wait for that, probably need to wait for that contract to come back before we make any motions on it.
Whatever, y'all.
I think it'd be better to wait on it.
Table it.
Okay, next item, number eight, is the second reading of the Kennedy franchise agreement. And this is the old one, but we're needing to get this one done, so basically, nothing changes it, Jill. They're leaving the same dollar amount, which we've done with all the others, so entertain a motion for that Kennedy grant, uh, agreement, franchise.
I make a motion for the Kennedy franchise agreement, second reading.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, say in five with I.
Aye.
Post same. And now, I need a motion to remove Larry Carter off the signature cards. Seems like the banks.
Oops.
So moved.
Well, I don't know what the big deal is. We told him, we don't want him on there anymore, but.
I'll make that motion, give him off the card.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Charles motion to kick him off, and Sandy motion, second, to kick him off, so. James, you and I are the good guys. Jim and I are the good guys. We have a motion, a.
Hey, he's got harder cattle after everything's been tough, we may want one from him.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say in five with I. Post same, motion passes. James, you have anything?
No, things seem to be going pretty good. Travis hadn't called me, fussing about nothing, and hadn't sent anybody to me fussing about anything, so I'm tickled to death right now. And I did thoroughly enjoy the KLC meeting.
It was a good conference session.
We'll have, when I retire, I can go. Captain of town.
Sandy, you?
You had given me a number, I believe it was you, Jill, maybe it was Alisa. Someone gave me a number to call a lady, and I accidentally deleted it. Do you think there would be a note in there somewhere? There's a lady that is wanting me to call her.
I don't know.
I'll text tomorrow and see. Yeah, and I've not heard anything from anyone about streets or anything, but you know what I always bring up? Have we had any more thoughts about the wrecking ball, or?
Or ZV.
Our, our old red truck, or, and those buildings at Oldham.
Y'all tell me when. The one building, we'll have to have some thought.
Yeah, because it's got all of our electrical in it.
Right, but the other, it, didn't, at the last meeting? Didn't we kind of just say, go for it?
We talked about it's gonna be a winter time project, just when, because they were still busy mowing and everything.
Are they gonna be tore down? I mean, no.
There's no repairing them, I don't think. Wouldn't want to, anyway, if we did them.
What could it? About the fencing, I don't remember if we talked about it.
I'd leave it up for the ball fields, I'd leave it up, because it's in pretty decent shape, isn't it?
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not awful, but.
That's not great.
It's not great.
But it's, it's workable right now.
Yeah.
Till we decide what to do. Okay.
And then, we'll get the visitors, the visitors.
Yeah, I was gonna catch them and give them one more time.
Yeah.
Not much, I just, only one thing, I guess Travis or Jill, uh, street light in front of Clarion Baldwin's old place.
Where's that at?
Uh, Meadow Lawn Drive.
They're by the Church of Christ.
Okay.
That's, that's out, pretty dark.
Okay, we'll call KU about that.
Many, that's look like an old one, I'm not sure, many upgraded.
They, yeah, they'll put in replacements.
Did, did they finally get us all lit up down Main Street?
Yes, but there's one out still that they gotta change the balance on.
What about that one that broken on the corner?
That's the one.
You got the cage and everything for it?
Uh.
Don.
Don, Bray, it's got one over.
Okay.
What about the street light? I talked to you about a WPT.
We, Alisa called KU, did they fix it yet?
I don't know.
We have called.
Okay.
There's nothing else?
Okay, Jill? Mike?
Well, they aren't, two that we sent to Phase 1, uh, one of them failed and one of them passed. So we have the one, the Wallace boy passed, and he is scheduled for Phase 2 the last of this month. And the other boy, he just had a problem with it running. He couldn't, couldn't pass it running. So, we're still in, I guess, in the process of looking for somebody else to send and see if we can work that out and get that done.
Do we have it?
And Mike can prove, that I can somewhat do five pushups, not girl pushups.
He can do that, too, well over.
So I might be applying.
Send, send her to the academy.
That's all I've got.
What kind of, do you have any idea what kind of timeframe they're looking at getting into the academy?
It'll be extra first year.
Well, I know, but.
I'm gonna, they're, gonna start, uh, I think the one in Madisonville in February.
Oh, okay, is that quick? Okay.
Well, I think, you know, it'd be possible that he may be probably going down there all reality. And it may be a thing that, uh, we're talking about, uh, let them come, well, they don't have anywhere to stay, so they'll probably get them all back and forth during the daytime.
That may make it easier on recruiting.
It could, but none of the chiefs are forward.
Really?
They didn't have any response back to, they, they were talking about letting them leave Richmond and come all back forth, but, but everybody was against it.
That is quite a journey.
I just thought they would, would have to experience the whole academy effect.
What do you think? What do you think?
I think they should too. I think it could be, I think it could be, some pe, some guys could handle it, and I think there'd be some that would simply, you know, coming home at night, being able, be at home and kind of do what they want to at night. And then it had a, uh, aspect of two where, uh, I remember, you're just allowed one tardy, and if you're tardy twice, you get kicked out. So, I could say, well, that would be an issue.
I see where the, you build on that camaraderie part.
Yeah, and they're, they're, they got one to set aside, and they're talking about.
Oh, they're gonna build the whole.
Build the dorms.
The whole nine yards, that's the plan.
Just to get darted.
It just takes the time to get it all done, but.
Start out in Madisonville, B2, they've got classrooms set up all there.
Okay.
Pretty good looking room. Uh, everything else is all right, I reckon.
All right.
I don't know, who all knows, who doesn't know. I have been extended an invitation to take a position with the Sheriff's Department. I have decided to take that position after weeks and weeks of anguish and anxiety and trying to make a decision. Out of respect for the city, I wanted to come here and address you guys directly. That being said, uh, the first of November, I'll be taking a detective's position at the Sheriff's Department.
Hate to see you go.
It's not been an easy decision for me. Fifteen years is a long time.
Some of it's probably didn't help matters any.
Probably, probably me, driving through yards.
No, I mean, making it hard on him to make that decision.
Okay, I gotcha.
It's been, uh, investigations is probably something I've wanted to do since I went to college for this job.
I knew it was a possibility, but I still hate to see you go.
Well, I think we all.
I hate to say that.
I like to see when anybody can follow their dream.
Appreciate it.
You gotta do what is good for you.
You're still gonna cover my back if I drive through somebody's yard.
He's gonna investigate you.
That's what he did, he saw my car, he's like, is that Sandy's car?
I would like to say, I've been good to work with, and he's done a super good job on some, several cases, and I was born glad to have him. And y'all think, y'all hate to lose him.
Yeah.
It's definitely gonna.
But I've always told, I've told everybody that's, that's went somewhere, I've told Tommy the same thing, you know, I wish them best of luck, and, you know, if they feel like they're improving their self, and they're doing something they wanna do, you know, I'm all for them. And I appreciate Tommy, you know, what he's done here, and.
Oh, absolutely.
He's been, you know, Charlie's been my right hand, with his always supporting me. And I hope he can say the same thing that I've supported him.
It's not an easy decision.
Not too late to change your mind.
If I cry, will that change your mind? Because it's about to make me, about to make me cry.
I'm not saying anything else, but I do, I will.
I'm too easy to get teared of.
Appreciate what you've done for us, very much.
I appreciate the city giving me the opportunity. I appreciate Mike. The leadership. It's, it's it's not an easy decision. I just, I don't have anything else to say.
But if it's something that you've kind of wanted to do ever since calling investigation? It's understandable.
Any of your boys twenty-one?
I did five weeks in the academy, that was long enough.
Okay.
Oh.
What's the question? I know the answer.
Oh, that's AV back there. Yeah, he's twenty-one.
I'm at least twenty-one, but I don't think I can face that running test.
I told the guys last night not to be afraid, I was the youngest one here, so they didn't have anything to worry about.
Travis, what's that?
Well, Travis, Travis is young, yeah, well, Larry was younger, too.
But anyway, we will pick it up, and we will go on.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully, I'll, hopefully I'll be able to drop what I'm doing and come to.
Can you get this done, Paul? It's been all good.
Oh, yeah.
Just for some clarification, the medical cannabis, was that just to allow it and follow the state, you're not decide ordinance kind of?
No, it's ordinance, it's.
But it was following the state guideline?
Well, we added to it.
Okay, okay, we are, that's what, okay.
We added, well, they say KDE, uh, associate, or whatever, accredited school.
Yeah.
And state accredited at daycare, we said all schools and daycares, and then we added parks.
Oh, so all, all of that, that you mentioned was what you had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you made, like, the attorney pays law board.
No, 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 and then the licensing, no, actually, they sent me an ordinance, it's all in one page, and I'm like, good, I like these kind.
That is perfectly about, I, I just wanted to make.
Right, and then, uh, we did add it on the, where the dispensary goes in the B3 with conditional use, and then the, uh, the other four can go in an I1, light industrial with conditional use. Which is what most people, most cities that are doing it are doing that same, kind of same way. Like, some of them call it different. Ours is a B3, and some of them call it commercial. And what have you.
All right, just checking.
All right. Guys, what can we do for you?
We're here to talk about, uh, putting a skate park in where Oldham's at.
Skate park, all right.
We believe it'd be really good for the younger community here, high schoolers, middle schoolers, kids our age, or, well, guys our age. I mean, it'd be a whole lot more to do. Very, a whole lot to do here. Not for people like us, that like to skate, be physical, there's. I mean, if we were to run down the road, that's about as physical as we can get or skate down the road, but. Might hit a pebble on the way. It'd be pretty bad.
I used to roller skate on those streets, you might hit a pebble.
And we, we also, around like one o'clock today, we start a petition. We already got over a hundred, a hundred signatures already for the county. Uh, the few people are actually interested in, you know, coming to it or helping volunteer, put in work, you know, whatever they wanna do to help out.
I gave them a piece of paper and I said, if anybody that thinks that this would be a good thing for Beaver Dan.
Yeah, it was, so he, he made it, like you said, at one o'clock, as of now, it has a hundred thirteen signatures.
Oh, y'all did one online?
Yeah.
I told him, get young people, old people.
She said paper, I'm like, these guys don't use paper? They don't use paper.
I was at school when I made it to him.
We just all have them where skating at Beaver Dan, which we asked us, would, would we, you know, if we think a skate park would be necessary for the county? Yeah, we do, I mean, we got plenty of stair sets and stuff to hit in town, but, you know, it takes the chances of maybe hitting a person or getting hit by a car.
And you're technically probably not supposed to be some of them, but we're not, but we're not talking about that.
Probably that also just like the normal local business owners.
Yeah.
It'd be like, they go through a lot of their hair.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say like ten o'clock at night, you know, uh, I gotta go to bed at that time. And that's usually when most places are closed, and I can skate freely, or when school's out, I can skate freely. And, uh, I think it'd just be really cool to have at least a bowl or something to start out with.
Do y'all have any kind of idea what you want or what? I know nothing about, so you're gonna have to help us with this.
I mean, like you said, we could, you know, if we needed, we could just put like the bowl there or something, just, you know.
Just to start out, see how the kids would react or guys our age, but, uh. We have a lot of friends that skate and would love to come down here. If we had a good spot, there'd be a whole lot of chores and that, it's just place too. A whole lot of travelers would come through. And also, there's potential, if we throw, uh, music shows out there, a whole lot of people would come out there. Uh, Harley does it all the time, uh, Bowling Green, uh, almost every week. They have a concert at the skate park and. It would help.
They do it a little bit a lot too.
They do it a little bit a lot. And we, Kip and I, we've been in the music scene since like two thousand fourteen. And we know these people would come to see a show and skate at the same time. And be willing to pay admission too. I mean, that's without a doubt as well.
Yeah, which I mean, like, even if, even if we just got like a bowl and like a tiny strip, light strip of concrete with some electrical outlets. Like we could set up a place where like, you know, people wanted to make, you know, whatever type of music, and then like they could sit up there and just like reach out to the city for like a permit or something like that, you know?
But we also thought, if there was a problem with funding, nobody uses Oldham, nobody goes there. You can take the concrete there, turn it to gravel, sell it, take the fence, scrap it, uh, all the metal, all the building, scrap it. You know, there's.
We've been trying to figure out what to do with Oldham, so.
You can sell it, man. There's, and it's all local. You got the, there's a gravel place somewhere around here that buys gravel. Like they're out in Rockport. Uh, then you got the scrapyard in Hartford that will buy all the metal or the aluminum. Uh, whatever the case is, it's all sellable and that could be a start to help before we ask for donations or start up some kind of good fund meeting.
I'll ask you two questions. One, can you get us some kinda design of something you'd like to see? Cause like I say. I'm lost at it.
We'd have, we'd have, we could get something like that.
We already have an idea, cause we didn't think, if we'd ever get this opportunity, we're gonna build a skate park in my backyard. We had it all drawn out and, uh, we have all kinds of ideas.
We were gonna build it like foot by foot with like Quit Creek, you know, just, yeah. Spend a few years.
We got nothing else to do, but we would also help with labor. We have friends that would help with labor.
Yeah, beyond that.
Eighty yards of concrete cost eighteen hundred dollars.
We, there's people down in Bowling Green that helped like build an indoor skate park in like this skate shop there. So like we had people with some like experience that know that have done stuff like this before.
Well, there's companies out there that'll do it, cause we've had act, some contact us about an interest, but at the time, we did a survey. Now, this is the highest one, it's been several years ago, and the skate park wasn't very high, cause I thought it would be. But, things change and there's a lot of factors that goes into something on a survey like that. You know, everything from who's doing it to who happens to be around the day in class when they get them, so they, you know, those things can change. Uh, but if you, if you give us some kinda design, and what I would recommend is, uh, dream big. What would you want it to look like? I'm not promising anything. But what would you like for it to look like when it's finished? It may be something, and on your design, think about that. Maybe there's a phase one, phase two and phase three.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, uh, we wanna go from beginner to like middle and then a little step bigger. Phase one would be the pool and maybe like a grind rail or something.
But, but yeah, like, it's one of those things too that like, I think that there is like definitely some like, you know, at least a desire in the community to have it. But also, I think it's a thing too that like, even if it maybe wasn't like the most prioritized thing, I think that if we like put it here and like younger people like were to see it. That it would be a thing that like, went from being a thing that like seems inaccessible and that they don't even like consider because it's, it seems so far away that like, you know. If it's like in your backyard, you're more likely to do it and it could encourage kids to, you know. Get more physical.
Get more involved with it.
And I've driven by Bowling Green and I've just seen spectators too, you know. That's all I'd have to be, if I hadn't been on a skateboard since probably nineteen eighty something.
Oh, you're gonna be the first one on there where, if these kids open, you're gonna be the first one.
No, I'm gonna knock the buildings down. I'm not gonna get on a skateboard.
But that would be, let's say, if you can come up with some design, like I'm saying, think big, and how you'd like to look when it's finished, if we could do it in phases. And number two, if you could help us look for any kind of grant funding. Uh, I know we've got access to some grants through the state and federal. But, the way they work, and I'm just gonna be upfront with you, right now, app, when applications open, they'll be due by probably the middle of April. It'll be, at the best, November or December of next year, finding out if you get them. And if you do get them, it could very well be as late as November or December the next year before the funding comes through. So that's two years from now, so I don't want you to, I don't want you to think this is gonna be a.
We, we played the waiting game for something our whole lives. Waiting, waiting for years.
But I like to be upfront with you, I don't necessarily, and I'm not saying there may be some other funds out there available that can get us kickstarted sooner. I'm not saying that, cause we can always use that grant for additional and add-on. But it'd be some, I'm open to it and to looking into it more.
Parks Commissioner Kevin Davis, the empty seat right over there, I talked, he said he wasn't gonna be here tonight, and I talked to him and he had been to Bowling Green and to Owensboro, and he. He feels like it's something that's doable too.
I took my grandson while I was serving the boats at that.
Bowling Green or Owensboro is just an hour away, it would just take really too far to go once a day, work twenty minutes a week.
Is there one in Central City or Morgantown?
There's one in Central City, it's real small, it's terrible.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Like two rooms.
Yeah, I've seen like people put together better skate parks for like a fifty dollar budget, you know what I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'd rather buy some kicker apps than go up to Central City and. That's just me personally. It's a, it's not terrible, but it's.
I didn't know there was one in Owensboro until Kevin said that.
Owensboro's pretty nice.
Where's it located?
Top.
Shit, top of the bargain.
But, but yeah, beyond that, like with the amphitheater being there, you know, people come to see like shows and whatnot. Um, but like if we had a skate park, like he said, you'd also have people coming for that, which could stimulate, you know, businesses in this little area if it was right there where Oldham was.
Yeah, I mean, after kids get out of school, they can go to the skate park. After they skate, they can get hungry, you can go Pickle Brady's or the new Mexican restaurant right there. Never thought pickleball could be big either.
Oh, I know. Yeah, we're open to new ideas, cause like Charles just said, we never thought pickleball would turn out to be like it has.
Oh, yeah, pickleball's awesome.
It's gone crazy over. Well, like I say, if you could, uh, do those two things for us, and our next meeting, of course, is in November, but if you get that stuff together, you can more than welcome to bring it by here and leave it. With Jill or some of them to get it to me and Sandy and Kevin. He'll be back by the end of this month. But, like I said, so we can kinda know what we're looking, looking at or, or would like to have eventually. And if you do find any funding or any grants out there, cause you all know where to look on, I wouldn't even tell you the name of a company that makes a skateboard, so.
Oh, don't worry, we know, we can, we, we know.
And that's the places to look, cause a lot of those places, isn't there a, uh, I'm either gonna embarrass myself really bad right now or really come off impressive. Isn't there a skater named Hawk?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm impressive.
He's back from our day.
Yeah, I just remember that. At one time, he had a foundation. I don't know if he still does or not.
He's two days older than Dirk, he's still skating.
But if he has money that he gives away, we're good.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure he does.
Uh.
But we also have buddies who own a skate shop that know where to get that kinda funding as well.
Well, I, I will say, I think there's foundations specifically for building skate parks in small towns. I, I don't know the name of it, but I'm, I'm pretty, I think it might just be called like, the like American Skate Park Association or Foundation or something like that. But I think there is one specifically for like getting skate parks in smaller, more rural.
Well, anything you can find is, along those lines just makes it that much quicker.
Yeah, what do they say, we can't build?
See what we can make happen.
We could, we would love a skate park here.
Keep the petition going. Like I say, when you get all this other information together and if you bring it by, or if you wanna wait until the next meeting, that's fine, cause like I say, it's. Six one half dozen others, it's not gonna all happen overnight, and as long as you all know that, and I can already tell you understand that, so. That's not a problem, but we're willing to work with you, see what we can come up with.
Thank you all so much for coming. I didn't know if you would or not. When I saw you out there, I was real excited.
We were ready to take yesterday back.
Well, thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I'll tell you, a committee that I used to serve on for young people, it was not about us, without, without us. And so, it's real important that we have your all's input, because you all know, you know, like I said, Paul said, Tony Hawk's back in our day. And, you know, you all know what's out there and all of that, so, you know, it's not about us, without us, so. You're, you're, be part of the team, we, we need help.
Well, thank you for having us and listening to what we have to say.
Thank you so much.
You guys have a blessed night.
See ya, take care.
Now you're gonna skate out of here?
Travis, I know we're gonna come back to this Hucks, but do you have anything?
Do you have the contract ready, AV?
Okay.
I got a couple more questions for you.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Hmm, no.
Do we, do we need to go into closed session for anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Go into closed session. Somebody else second it?
Second.